Hey, welcome everyone to our second October meeting and we're glad to have you here. If you would, we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation. If you would rise please and join me in doing so.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Let's open a prayer. Father, we thank you for talking to you that these folks have or the folks that you have put in positions of leadership in our community, the time that they are taking to lead our community in the right direction. Lord, pray that you would give wisdom tonight, just clarity as we move forward throughout the meeting, and Lord just that you would bless all the folks who give their time to this community. We ask those things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I'm sorry, I couldn't allow you to introduce yourself.
No, I'm sorry. John Lanes, one pastor is here in town. I'm trying to get that up on Turner Street.
Yes, good. Thank you for being here. President Lehman, you may open the meeting, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Call the meeting into order, please. Welcome, everyone. The agenda was posted and it's on the table in the back of the room. At this time, I know of no changes, so at this time, we'll look to our clerk to call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. The first item of business this evening, we will consider the approval of our minutes from the meeting of the 10th of October. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a change. The, on the second, on page three where it says, "The Indiana Utero Regulatory Commission will hear public comment on the citizens' gas rate," it's actually the wastewater, not the gas rate, "on November the 3rd at the Westfield Middle School." And they'll have a, I guess, an educational session at 5:30 on November the 3rd at the middle school. So, that's a small change.
Would you like to make a motion to approve with that change?
I will, so moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. This time, we will open the, no problem. We'll open to the floor to anyone that's, would like to address the council on items that are not on the agenda tonight. Do we have any cards?
No cards, sir.
Does anybody want to address the council on items not on the agenda? Hearing, seen none. We will move on. This time, we will look to the approval of the claims. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve claims.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We have no special presentation, so we are going to move on directly into old business. And at this time, we will hear about ordinance 16-23, Liberty Ridge, PUD District. This will be presented by Kevin Todd. Kevin, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Kevin Todd with Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is a PUD proposal for a residential subdivision located on approximately 60 acres on the south side of 151st Street, west, I'm sorry, east of Town Road. This item was introduced before you at your June 13th meeting and received a public hearing at the Advisory Plan Commission on July the 5th. Throughout the public process, the project went through some fairly substantial changes and modifications which are highlighted in the department report uploaded to your agenda this evening and will also be summarized for you by the petitioner in a brief presentation in a moment. This item does come to you with a favorable recommendation from the Advisory Plan Commission and is eligible for adoption consideration this evening. The petitioner's representative, Mr. John Dabashewitz, is here this evening and would like to say a few words following his presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have of staff. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council. For the record, my name is John Dabashewitz. I'm a land use professional with the law firm in Nelson and Frankenberger. We represent the petitioner, CalAtlantic Homes. With me this evening is Keith Lash on behalf of the applicant, Kevin Sumner, the project engineer, and Jim Schinver, an attorney with our office. As staff indicated, we last appeared in front of you on June 13th for introduction prior to going to Plan Commission meeting, where we had a couple of meetings in advance of the commission forwarding its unanimous favorable recommendation regarding this request. I'd like to take a few minutes to summarize those revisions for you. As staff indicated, the properties located east of Town Road, Town Road to the left-hand side of the image here, Town Road north-south, 151st Street along our north perimeter of our site. The property in the, which is the subject of this request is approximately 60 acres in size. The 20-acre parcel you see here highlighted in light green is the site where Central Christian Church is developing currently, a new church at that location. In addition to the attendance by CalAtlantic as well as the project engineer, there's a couple of representatives here from the church with us this evening as well. Moving on to highlight some of the changes that occurred since the last time you saw this request, the site layout, one of the predominant changes with the, was the site layout was rearranged to provide a frontage load, road, here along 151st Street. So, all the homes along the perimeter of 151st would face that direction with one exception, the side of Lot 1 will face that. So, you have all the houses here where the fronts of those houses will be facing 151st Street. A black four-board fence was added. Jim, if you can hand out this exhibit, we'd like to provide one handout. It's of a drawing that was distributed to the Plan Commission at their last meeting and also included it within your ordinance. Regarding open space, while the zoning ordinance requires 15% open space, this plan provides for approximately 29% open space. The open space is positioned to protect natural features and provide a transition from the single residential lot to our east, the single residential lot located here to our east. You can see a large amount of open space provided here along our eastern perimeter. The plan provides for pedestrian connectivity, not only through the construction of paths and sidewalks on interior and perimeter streets, but also through an internal pathway network which connects north to south here, starting at 151st Street down through our site to the property zone as part of the town west development to our south. Connectivity here, internal to development as well as to the cul-de-sac here, providing east-west connections across the site as well as north-south connections and activation of some of this common area so that it can be enjoyed by more than just the residents who live on the perimeter of those sites. As you can see, there are two pedestrian as well as vehicular connections that are provided to our east located here as well as the south located here. That's into the approved town west development. As that area to our south and east develops, those streets will be continued and connected to 141st Street as well as Town Road to our west. In addition, an amenity center has been added that's located as shown here on the diagram. There are character exhibits which illustrate that facility, which will include a pool and pool house as well as playground. Another more significant change which has occurred to the proposal since it was introduced in front of the council is that CalAtlantic has changed the proposed product type for the neighborhood. The original product series was to have a general average sales price in the low to mid 300s, whereas revised, the home product series that will be offered within the neighborhood is estimated to have an average sale price of over $400,000 in price. The most recent enhancements that have been made to the plan include the reduction of four lots along 151st Street here as well as that allowing for larger, wider lots along 151st Street. That would also accommodate side-load garages. So, therefore, a minimum of 12 of the 20 houses which face 151st Street would have side-load rather than front-load garages. That was done, requested the Plan Commission as well as members of the public who had felt that there was the need for a mix of homes along that frontage rather than all front-loading garages that would face 151st Street. The north side building facade of Lot 1 as well as the east side of Lot 142 will be treated as if they were along a street frontage. Rather, in this case, there's a narrow strip of common area between Lot 1 and 151st Street and the side of Lot 142 doesn't face a street, but there was the thought that visibility would be of one traveling west on 151st Street that they could see the side of that house, similar to the houses along this street here, which would be required to have masonry wainscote along the side as well as enhanced architectural treatment. In addition, at the last Plan Commission meeting, Lots 1 through 18, as shown here, Lots 1 through 18, which would be more visible from Town Road and adjacent to the church, there was a commitment made, that's part of your ordinance today, on top of the additional architectural requirements that were in place at that time, that all the houses, Lots 1 through 18, would have a minimum masonry wainscote around all four sides of those dwellings. Finally, ranch homes rather than two-story, but ranch homes would be limited to a total of 56 throughout the entire development and no more than one for each one of these sections along 151st Street. The section here would only have no more than one ranch, the section here, no more than one ranch, here and likewise here, no more than one ranch home in those set of four and five respectively, so that there would be provided the image that you see as a character illustration in front of you this evening, that image along 151st Street of predominantly two-story dwellings rather than a ranch dwelling. In conclusion, we believe CalAtlantic has made considerable enhancements to the proposal which warrant favorable consideration. We are respectfully requesting this evening that the council approve the proposed PUD based upon these enhancements as well as positive community input as well as a unanimous favorable recommendation by the Plan Commission. We want to thank you for your time this evening and be glad to answer questions that you may have in advance of adoption consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Kevin, anything else? As mentioned, this is up for adoption consideration tonight. At this time, I would entertain a motion and we'll open for discussion.
Move to approve ordinance 16-23, Liberty Ridge, PUD District.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Item is up for discussion, comments?
John, I just have a couple of questions. When is the site work expected to begin and how long will the site work take before they actually start building any houses?
This is Keith Lash with CalAtlantic Homes. Keith has indicated that site construction would begin spring of 2017, likely to see homes under construction late 2017. It would probably be either at the very end of next year or the beginning of 2018 before the first homes would start to be occupied by families.
With the price escalation from the original proposal, what's the build-out time anticipated for this?
Two and a half homes per month, which calculates out at roughly 36 months to 40 months.
I've just commented that this has been through a public hearing, a public comment. I know the developer has met multiple times with neighbors in the area out there as well as various APC members, council members, to try to get this improved. And we've been at this for several months and I think we have with the architectural improvements on 151st Street, which was one of my biggest concerns initially. I think this would be a good project, particularly with considering what's around it to the south and some to the east with some commercial developments. I think it's a big transition to our, to other residential in the western part of the township.
Personally, I'd like to thank CalAtlantic for stepping up and having a lot of confidence in our community. I, I know that they've upped their game a bit. We're pleased to have you out here. I think it's a good, good fit for the community and be a good benefit to everybody, so thanks. Anybody else? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks for your time this evening.
This time, we will move to ordinance 16-37, 2017 budget. It is up for adoption consideration this evening. It has been introduced back in September, been through public hearings, had a couple work sessions, individually, group. Is up for adoption consideration tonight. I would entertain a motion and if we have questions, we would open it up for discussion.
I move to approve the budget as presented.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
Sorry, I don't have a, I don't have any discussion, but I did have a question. I think Todd's the one to answer this, knowing the state of Indiana, the, the budget is adopted and goes down to DLGF. This is a balanced budget and if it were not, the state could cut the budget arbitrarily. So, I'm assuming my read is balanced. I just want to have verification that that's a balanced budget going downtown.
So, yeah, the, the state would not approve an unfunded budget, so they would make the modifications, any deficits and correct any errors that, as they see it, that the expenses have to match the revenues as they know them today.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign, carries unanimously. Thank you.
Congratulations, you've just done what the state of Illinois has failed to do for several years now. Nice job.
We're just a small city. Ordinance 16-38, the salary ordinance. Again, this has been introduced in September and continued through the process. It is up for adoption consideration tonight. I would note that there was a slight increase across the board. Again, this is pretty much incorporated within the budget, but it does require attention on its own. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve ordinance 16-38, 2017 salary ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Ordinance 16-43, this is a, an amendment to the materiality threshold of ordinances, 99-03 and 16-22. It was introduced October 10th and it is up for adoption consideration this evening. It has been discussed. We have all been through the purpose and the details of it. I would entertain a motion and then we can open for discussion.
Move to approve ordinance 16-43 to amend the materiality threshold, ordinance 99-03 and 16-22.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is the $5,000 to $10,000 limit before that transaction has to be reported to the auditor. Is that, is that correct?
Not to the auditor, to the state. Board of, State Board of Accounts.
Right.
This is really within the Department of the Clerk. Any other questions or comments?
I just might make note that this is standard in other cities and towns and as we grow, there's a need to raise the threshold.
Any other comments before we call for the vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. That concludes all of the items that we have listed for action this evening. I would open the meeting at this time for any comments from council members. Mr. Hoover, do you have a report?
Are we not doing the...
New Business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, what's that? He does pay attention? Sorry. Okay, good. Thank you so much. Yes, under New Business, we do have the inter-local agreement between Hamilton County, Indiana and the city of Westfield regarding the funding of administrative provisions of the Youth Assistance Program. Mayor.
Thank you for remembering us.
Well, not exactly, but...
Well, you know, the, this is, this is a very interesting piece. It's taken a while to get done, but the importance of it is, is just huge, you know, with the, what this city began many, many years ago with our Youth Assistance Program is now spreading throughout the state because of its success and the fact that it keeps government to a minimum and involves our public very much in its operation. And that's exactly what has happened here. We have one early intervention advocate that is funded in the city of Westfield. She cares for over 100 referrals a year mainly from our school corporation. That's a lot of families to evaluate. So, completely independent of government, our, our Board of Directors of the Westfield Youth Assistance has raised enough funds to fund a half-time, early intervention advocate to help our full-timer. So, sounds simple, but to go through all the bureaucracy of sending that money to the county so it can be used here is what you have in front of you and I would certainly appreciate your approval of this document.
Thank you. And my oversight was not, not intentional, obviously. This is a major situation and we are...
But you know, when I think back Chuck, of what if we only had youth assistance when you were a child, what we could have made of you?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. This is up for adoption consideration this evening. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No discussion, but I would just recuse myself from voting on this just simply because of a potential conflict of interest with my state position.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we will move on. Mr. Hoover, do you have a report for us?
I have an update from our Advisory Plan Commission meeting last Monday. We approved a detailed development plan for the CVS at 146th and Ditch Road in the Harmony Commercial Area. We sent a positive recommendation to this council on the Trails Planned Unit Development with some conditions and those conditions are being resolved by the developer at this time. I expect we will see this at our next meeting. We approved a detailed development plan for the campus parking lot up at 196th Street. The Spring Mill Station, we had a subdivision of parcels on the, in the southwest quadrant that was approved. And our final item was the Liberty Ridge Plan Unit Development, which we acted on on this evening and that received a, the PUD for that received a favorable recommendation from APC. And next Monday is Halloween, so I'm off.
With that said, it is Halloween next week, I believe, or Mayor, you may mention this, but I believe that our kids are five to eight, correct? Curfew? Anything else from the council?
Thank you. Couple exciting things are coming up. We have a nationally recognized expert in the art of negotiation, a gentleman from Harvard, faculty member that, that Todd has gotten to know, his name is Dan, Daniel Shapiro, will be here for a couple of sessions this week. I think it's Wednesday at, out at the Grand Park Baseball Administration Building. If anybody's interested in that, I think that's in cooperation with HCLA, is it not, Todd? The Hamilton County Leadership Academy. So, it's something very cerebral, so I think it would be good for our council to partake of that in the art of negotiation. So, and speaking of the HCLA, we do have here attending as part of her requirements, Heather Brownell is up here in the front and you may know Heather as her, for how long now? Next door?
It was 18 months.
18 months at the Heart and Soul Clinic and she just announced that she's going to be leaving for another opportunity. So, we certainly want to thank you, Heather, for everything you've done over there. It's a partnership with the city of Westfield and thanks for all you've done there. We appreciate it very much. The last fireside tales is Wednesday, Simon Moon, 6:30. We talked about Halloween. I was very proud of our people a week or so ago at the Indiana Association of Cities and Towns. I think we had, we had three different groups for our, from our little city that presented accomplishments to, to the groups down there, but we also received for the second time the Green Community of the Year, which means more than just planting trees. It has also to do with other kind of environmental endeavors that we've been able to do, so I was really proud of our people there. We are now finished with our, our resurfacing program. You've seen a lot of new black surface down. I really want to congratulate our department there. I know Angie Smitherson is here and Jeremy is on vacation, I think, but I want to say this and you know I'm kind of a street guy, but we used the full, you know, $1 million that we were granted from the state, if you remember, on the Crossroads Communities, and we matched that with our existing funds, but where we probably gained an extra $200,000, and I think I'm a little conservative on that, is that our guys, Phil Sondling and Dustin Shu, they got way ahead of the game and got all the necessary paperwork filed with the state way ahead of time and were able to get it out to bid to the private sector long before the state actually sent the money or approved other communities. So, we were able to take advantage of bidding prior to all of these millions and millions of dollars hitting the street. And that's something that you don't read about, but these guys just did a, did a fantastic job at that. Pass that on. Pass that on, Angie, if you would. Lastly, we were very pleased that the Big Ten Conference is going to make a appearance for the next two years here in Westfield, in Grand Park, the two thousand sixteen and seventeen. Big Ten men's soccer tournaments will take place here in Westfield, and that will be this year. On November eleventh will be the semifinal game. That's a Friday. And on Sunday, the thirteenth, will be the championship for the Big Ten Soccer. It'll be broadcast on the Big Ten Network. And this made possible to a grant, twenty thousand dollar grant from Sports Indiana in conjunction with the Hamilton County Sports Authority. Of course, if we can get IU that far, it'll make a huge difference in the gate. So they're entering their, their finals now as they go through the process. I think IU's had a, has a, had a wonderful season. I might add that the Jerry Yeagley and his son, who the current coach, were instrumental in, in helping to convince the Big Ten to move that here. So if we can get IU there, it should be a really fun time, so, thanks.
Thank you. That completes our agenda for this evening. Unless there are other comments or an objection, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming.